Very good, Rachel. Thank you. Nice to see some of your familiar faces. Lead team members, directors, members of the community. This presentation is something our school district has been doing for several years now. This mid-year budget review is not required by state staff. It's not like the annual meeting or the budget hearing that we have in August. But this is something that boards in the past felt was very important as the board continued their process of fiscal responsibility, accountability for our schools and the resources that we have. So we have several slides. Many of these slides are similar to what you've seen in the past, but they're updated with current year information. Also, our new business manager, Eric Nelson, has added a little bit of his own flavor to this presentation, and we'll continue to build this as we move forward. If you have suggestions for how this presentation could be approved in future years or if there's information that you would like to see included in this presentation in future years, please see me after this presentation and we'd be happy to get that feedback. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Eric Nelson. This is Eric's first governor of the school district. Leah Dieter was the district business manager for several years before Eric. And Eric comes to us and really brings a fresh approach to budgeting. We're really looking forward to our new budgeting cycle. He'll go ahead and present the slides, and then I'll also add comments as he goes along. So Eric, take it away.
Thanks for being here, everybody. Just to start out with, school finances are influenced by various numerous factors. Enrollment being very key, property values, state funding, state rules, state regulations. As you can see here, our budget includes a lot of different funds that each have their own purpose. You can see them listed there. And the budget for all of our funds in the SDMA is around $67.2 million. So I think you've seen this before as well. This is the key dates in the budgeting process. And so today, January, is our mid-year budget hearing. I think it was last Friday where we had a January membership count, which is the second Friday in January. Before that, we had, you know, your approval of the budget timeline. Also been preparing a bunch of packets in December, and those will be issued to school leadership tomorrow. So we're right on schedule in this budgeting process. And as you can see throughout the year, there are things that predictably happen as we go through this.
Just one thing to add, one of the goals that the board set for us this year was to make the budgeting process more inclusive. And the budgeting process always has involved building level, our classroom teachers, our department heads. And this year, Eric has created a tool which will be shared tomorrow with staff. And really, it's a tool that is in addition to the budget process that really provides a direct access for staff members who might have innovative ideas for either programming or services that could have a good impact on our school. And as our budgets continue to be very, very tight, it's also a tool that can be used to provide suggestions for all things to be done more efficiently in the school district. So that's going to be a change, first time in 11 years that I think or anybody that we're going to have this online tool. So we're really excited to roll that out tomorrow.
So this current system that we have in school finance really started around 1993. When you had the Wisconsin Legislature institute a limit on revenue that school districts are entitled to receive each year. So these revenue limits were instituted for the 1993-1994 school year. And their spending in that year was within the prior year. So if your district happened to not spend as much money in the 92-93 year, then you were sort of locked in into this spending pattern, which has existed today. Now, of course, things have been added, things have been changed, mechanisms many, many times since 1993. But a majority of school funding is still regulated under a revenue limit, which it continues to. But again, it's almost like it's, you know, they started out with a system, and then they just keep adding and adding and adding, not really taking much away. So you end up with this very complicated system that we have today. So our picture for 24-25 revenue per pupil adjustments have increased $325. That is fortified for a long time that it will be increasing that amount for quite a while. Our ceiling right now is at $11,325. Our per pupil aid that has remained as well at $72. Categorical aid for special education, again, those are reimbursed around 33%, a lot of times lower. And a lot of those are particularly for next year because, of course, the state is working on their biennial budget. And so all of these things, or many of these things may be changed by the time they actually get that budget passed and etc.
Yeah, I think Eric mentioned it. This is, this current school year is the second year of the state budget. So the second year is always easier for a district budget manager because the law's already been passed, you already know what the specifications are. And even though, you know, you look at all those numbers, there was some new revenue for our school district in the last biennial budget. The revenue limits were increased through the governor's veto. And also, the low revenue ceiling that Eric mentioned, that got moved up a little bit, starting to close that gap. There are some school districts that I believe are receiving over $14,000 per student, whereas in Menominee, we're a little over $11,000. So we did see that gap closed a little bit. We're hopeful that that gap will continue to close in future budgets. We're also hopeful that reimbursement for special education programs will get improved in future budgets. But that all remains to be seen.
So enrollment, it's hugely important for a district. And as you can see from the graph, Menominee has blocked pupils throughout the past four or five years. Okay? Now, in the past, enrollment projections have used what's called a caste upward method. So you take 4K, the amount of 4K students. And then as you go through the years, those 4K will turn into kindergartners, first grade, second grade, third grade, etc. And you just kind of roll them through with the exact same number as you roll through the years. Okay? So that's called the caste ordinance. The advantage is it is a conservative estimate as to what the enrollment will be. However, it can not be very accurate a lot of times. Another thing which is shown here, the projection is shown here is the, I'm sorry, the survival rate method. So what you do is you take five years of enrollment data and you notice, you know, when you have bumps or when you have valleys in enrollment. And what I did notice studying the past five years is that enrollment has a bump in sixth grade and in ninth grade. Why does that happen? Well, with the private schools in the area, you have a lot of families who are thinking, well, K through five, I'm going to send my kid to K through five to the private, local private school, and then I'm going to send them to public school. Or I'm going to send them to K through eight, then they make the decision to go to public school. So you do have a bump in the sixth grade and the ninth grade. So taking that into consideration, that's what that red line is. It's a slow kind of growth estimate. And again, this is only an estimate, only a projection, but that's what the data is suggesting moving forward in the next four or five years.
But this is a lot we'll really keep an eye on. And it's really pocketed in Wisconsin. Most of our state has seen decline in enrollment and has seen decline in enrollment for quite some time. In Menominee, we were doing quite well. We're actually on a stable growth pattern about a decade ago. And then COVID hit, and you could see that COVID across the state really took a dip on enrollment as several students, you know, did not come to school, did not come back to school. We did recover. However, I think our demographics also kind of hit as well as the opening of another private school, more home choice methods. I think COVID, some people saw what virtual education was like, or they might not have considered that before. So there's a lot of changing landscape with enrollment in public schools in Wisconsin. So I really appreciate Eric digging into these numbers. You've seen other local schools in the region also looking at their enrollment. And we'll have to watch this very closely right now. The future looks pretty decent, but I think from year to year, this is something the board is really going to have to keep a close eye on.
So the tax levy. So again, I mentioned before, the revenue limits, the revenue limit for Menominee is around $39 million. The state has equalization aid that fills in that $39 million amount. Right? Not completely. But I believe the state equalization aid this year was close to $26 million. So that left over approximately 12, if you run a 13 billion that was levied in local property taxes. So that total levy is not just the revenue limit tax levy, it's also the referendum approved debt that you can also see there in that column is also the community service tax levy for Fund A, if you can also see there. So that was a total levy of 17, rounding up to $17.8 million.
Yeah, I really think this new graphic that Eric put together helps visualize what the tax levy is made up of. But it is important, like Eric started out with, this is only a portion of how our school is funded. Menominee is actually considered a lower property value district compared to the average. So we're positively aided. Means that our revenue limit, we receive more of our revenue from state aid than from the local tax levy. There are other districts which have higher property valuation per student that have more of their revenue coming from the state, or from the local tax levy, and less of their money coming from the state. So as property valuation changes and also as enrollment changes, that changes your property value per member, that changes how you are reimbursed or aided by the state. So right now, this is a picture from Menominee. Eric, you have a question?
Yeah, our private school funders in the 110 section, are they on this graphic?
They would not be included in this, right? I believe actually that would be included in, yes, you're right, it would be included in the 12.8.
Okay, so it's, we're having to prepare someone to take a rap.
So to clarify, if you heard two answers there. It's not part of the spendable revenue limit, but it is part of the tax revenue limit, which is included in the tax levy.
Good question.
Yeah. So here it is, the school district in Menominee, Eric's tax rate plan for the mill rate history. You can see in 2021, it was $8.48 per $1,000 of property value. And that fell all the way to $5.60 this past year. So it was a 9% decrease from last year and a total of $2.88 decrease that for five years this week.
And revenue limits, or I'm sorry, mill rates across the state have been pretty high. And the legislature has really tried hard to lower property taxes. And by putting more dollars into state aid, by putting more dollars into per pupil aids, that lowers the local tax levy burden. So we would like to take credit for this, but in all honesty, this is really more about state policy. The challenge is, is that even though the state has provided more funding that is in name school funding, it's school aids, it is not spendable school funding. So you may see that, you know, the state of Wisconsin increased school age by 9% or something like that. That does not mean that it's spendable revenue for schools. Instead, that 9% increase, maybe a small piece of that has been spendable revenue for schools, but a large part of the aids approved in Madison have actually gone towards proper tax relief by lowering mill rates, you can see that it has been effective.
Let us see here.
Sure.
Average mill rates, we answered it.
The area average is $6.87. And as you can see here, Menominee is one of the lowest in the area, taking like a sample of schools in this area.
Yes, and a large reason why Menominee has low mill rate, really a couple reasons. One, it's how we manage our school district and how the calculation comes out in terms of what our revenue limit can be. But then the other piece where we're really seeing mill rates vary from community to community are referendums. You all know that we had an operating referendum last February here in Menominee, which did not pass. So the spending and the tax rate in our school is less compared to other districts that have tax referendums, either operating or capital referendums. That's a large part of why Menominee is well below the recent.
And you can see here too, and this is a statewide trend, property values in Menominee, school districts have grown quite a bit as well. And this is also reflected in the state average. In fact, I think the state average has increased more relative to Menominee, which has increased our state equalization aid a little bit because of that difference.
Yeah, again, Eric talked about it, the amount of aid you receive is based on how much property value per pupil you have. So as values have gone up in Menominee, if they're not going up higher than the state average, we actually are considered a less state, I'm sorry, less property value rich district. But even with that being said, you can see aid, or I'm sorry, I confused my words. Valuation has increased significantly, that also pushes the mill rate down.
Rachel?
The state average mill rate is $7.9.
You just looked it up? Wonderful, thank you. So.
That was like embarrassing.
So the question was. Yeah, that's a good question. So the state average was 7.09? Okay. The regional average, $6.87, and Menominee, $5.60.
The equalization aid, so that has increased as we've said before. I think a lot of times when you hear about this in the news, that state equalization aid has gone up, a lot of people think that school districts are getting more money. That is not correct because, again, our revenue that the school districts collect is limited by that revenue limit. Now, the state will fill in that, and that has increased. But when you have equalization aid increase, it means that the tax levy is going to be less on the local property taxes. So this is the voucher impact. I think in the last biennium budget, the K through eight was around $8,000 to students. The nine through 12 was around 10, and the SNSP was around 12,000 per student. So this has gone up quite a bit. And also, the total cost for the 24-25 year is nearly $1 million for private schools. So this does not decrease the amount of money to Menominee school district, but it does increase the tax levy to the taxpayer. So as part of our levy, this figure is added in, and it increases the mill rate and the tax levy for the local taxpayers in Menominee. You can see the percentage increases have gone up a lot over the past three or four weeks.
Can you define the WPCP and SNSP? I think it's Wisconsin.
Uh, yes, Wisconsin Rental Choice Program, Wisconsin Rental Choice Program. I forgot what C stands for. And then the SNSP is for special needs or special education funding. If the students identify as special needs or special education, they get extra funding for the private schools.
So, yeah, to clarify, that $981,735, just almost $1 million is what comes out of our fund for the private schools.
So that is an extra levy that is put in the local property taxes. So, Menominee School District has utilized debt refinancing opportunities in the recent years to really bring down the interest costs that the district is paying. So these efforts have really resulted in over $800 in interest cost savings throughout the years. This graph illustrates that, although it looks confusing. The graph really shows, the red bars are the bond payments through the years that we would be paying for interest and also principal on those referendum loans. The blue is how much projected that we will be paying instead because, again, we're paying, we're saving on interest, we're paying down the debt. And so the blue line through the years is what we can expect to pay, and again, that's savings. That's the savings the district is paying.
There's been two key ways that our district has managed the long-term debt effectively to help reduce the interest costs. The first way has been refinancing debt and taking advantage of historically low interest. Multiple times, and we were able to reduce those interest rates. And that's where a lot of that space between the projected payments in red and the new payment schedule in blue. The other piece that we've done is with the mill rate so quickly, we have been able to take advantage of that and levy for our debt at a higher rate than the schedule required. It's not, again, it's not spendable money for the school district. What it is, it's advantageous for taxpayers to pay down our debt early and, again, save interest payments. We've saved millions of dollars for our school district with how we've handled the long-term debt. Everything is definitely paid off in the 2033-2034 school year.
Wait, wait a minute.
All right.
But if I got more, it sounded like they're saying there's extra tax levy to the government. To complete on the debt.
Yeah, the revenue limit allows for tax levy above the revenue limit for referendum approved debt. And the district can modify debt schedule based on the needs of the district. And also, as long as you make a minimum payment, you can levy above that and pay it down early if needed. And in some cases, that's been chosen to do with the defeats in some long-term debt.
We'll talk about this later, I don't think.
Sure. Okay, and yeah, as part of the tax levy too, with the Fund A levy is free that has remained relatively consistent. The latest levy we got on there is $390,000, where, again, this is the community fund. Federal grant funding, you have the various titles there, including the Carl Perkins. Pretty stable federal funding, there has been a slight decrease in Title I and Title II. An increase there, as you can see, in Title IV, Carl Perkins as well, a decrease. But pretty consistent throughout the years, again, for federal grant title funding. And then the idea funding, again, pretty consistent, just a decrease of 1%. And then in the flow-through, idea flow-through grants, idea increase of 0.2 did decrease, so very consistent.
And federal funding has been in the news a lot in the last several months. Talked about the possible closure of Department of Education. And I know we've had a discussion at the board level about that as well. It is a misconception, people, I think, don't realize that only a small percentage of the district funding comes from federal sources, but those are important programs that are being funded. Whether we're talking about the title program that is used to provide additional support for students in our schools from a low socioeconomic background, and then also in special education. Unfortunately, the funding for special education does not even come close to matching the expenses, the mandated expenses for our special education programming. However, we certainly appreciate the federal funding that we receive, and we are watching closely to see whether or not the funding will continue. It is anticipated that federal funding will continue in the near term. However, you know, some cuts might be coming down the line, but we'll continue to keep a close eye on it.
Salary and benefits, so this by far is the biggest expenditure for the school district and that is industry-wide approximately 76% for salary and benefits, which, again, tried and succeeded to remain competitive. Factors like inflation, employee surrogacy as well has been difficult. Also, just increases in inflation trending around, as it says, about 4.12%. 2025 around 3%. So getting better, but also inflation.
Yeah, a few things to think about here. One is the teacher shortage, and there's been a teacher shortage for well over a decade across the country. Locally, we have seen that shortage really get more difficult in the last five years, and especially after the COVID-19 pandemic. Menominee continues to still do very well in our ability to recruit and retain terrific staff members. Based on our school district demographics, we have gone through significant turnover with teachers retiring, and we continue to see retirements. We are through the peak, I would say, of the demographic change that we are seeing in our school district in terms of the demographics of our staff, and that retirements can be expected. But like Eric said, inflation was extreme. Last year, it did come down to 4.12. We are waiting for the numbers to get certified from the WERC. Right around 3%, just under 3% are some of the most recent numbers that we have seen. But other things that we have done, the school district with salary benefits, not only trying to retain our great staff members, but also to be efficient and to use our resources and have the greatest value. And with our district health insurance, we had a lot of success with our health insurance for years. Recently, we've seen a real uptick in the cost of health insurance. So we made a significant change this year and changed our health insurance plan. Not only did we have a high deductible plan last year, but now we're directing service through Care Navigation. And Samantha Hoyt, our HR director, is also in the midst of setting up a local near-site clinic, which also will help reduce costs, while providing terrific care and service for our employees.
Fund 73 is the post-employment benefits. So the liability in that account is around $4 million. On the fund balance, it's $5 million. So it remains well-funded and, you know, will be able to cover the liabilities. What does this cover? Health insurance premiums, cash side bits, and then contributions to HR, I guess, and things like that. So this remains well-funded.
11 years ago, we had, we were upside down in our post-employment fund by about $30 million. About $30 million of benefits that were projected compared to what had been saved. So not only were savings increased, but also benefits were changed. And at this point, you can see that we expect our benefit program for local post-retirement to be fully funded.
Fund 46, you can see, so the balance adds up June 30th of 2024 with 8.6 million. Assuming no new revenue or no new monies are going into this account, you can see kind of the trend, given what is expected for the projects in those particular years versus the amount that we have in there. It's going to have a negative balance, as you can see, in 27, 28 exactly.
So a few years ago, and we've always been very proud of the 30-year capital improvement plan that we put together to cover our current footprint. About a decade ago, when that plan was created and it was funded, where we felt everything for the future of our current footprint was funded. Some significant changes have occurred since that time. Some of the most significant changes had to do with technology. All of our technology infrastructure was added into the plan. That almost doubled the cost of the plan. And then also, with the. And then also with the budget cuts that needed to occur with the referendum not passing last February, no additional new contributions are planned for Fund 46 this time. And that's something the board will have to consider, will have to continue to consider as to whether or not our school district will operate a capital improvement fund. School districts, many school districts do not operate a capital improvement fund. Many school districts be able to put together facility plans and capital plans, what a referendum to fund those ideas. We were hopeful we would not have to do that in Menominee, but with the way things have turned out, that is something I think the board is going to have to consider as we move forward with making sure that we keep our capital, buildings, facilities, equipment, all of that up to date.
And finally, the fund balance, as you can see here, remains steady. It's expected to be steady for this 2425 year. However, there is a lot of uncertainty, whether it be the state budget, whether it be some current projections that we have, whether it be enrollment. We anticipate that this will probably be even to the next few years. I think you have the slide here for that as well.
So this is a modification to a slide that was shared a couple of times last year. First during the referendum process and then again after the referendum failed. It's been modified again based on the budget adjustments that were made over the summer and also the expenses that have become known into the school year. You can see that through the reductions that were made coming into the 2024, 2025 school year, we have essentially balanced this year's budget. Looking out to 2025, 2026, that red line continues to dip down, that is the annual deficit. It's all projection-based, it really will depend on the state budget and what the legislature approves in terms of revenue limit adjustments and other aids. It also will depend on spending in the school district. So it's a very rough projection to the future with a lot of unknowns. But also what we know is the yellow portion of the fund balance, that's the portion that right now is calculated that we need for operating without any kind of cash flow borrowing. In terms of making payroll, in terms of the purchases that the school district needs to make, our revenue does not come to us equally each month. So there are times during the school year where cash is low and the school district needs to be able to pay its bills during the slow times. Thus, there needs to be a reasonable fund balance for us to operate. If the fund balance dips below the yellow level, the 11 million, like it's projected to in 2028, 2029, our school district would be in a situation where short-term borrowing would be needed. That is something that happens for schools across the state. I have been in school districts that have needed to cash flow borrow, either to a short-term note or to a line of credit. The challenge there is a bit of additional interest cost, less dollars that go into the classroom and more dollars that go to the bank. But this is our current projection, but again, I'm sure it's going to change significantly depending on the decisions made over the next 12 months. Ken?
How much does that balance fluctuate? 11 million sounds a lot, but I can't tell you what you're getting money like from the year. So it's a go up and it's a go down because it didn't break the goal?
Right now, our fund balance is at a point where we don't have a problem. But if we get to the point where we get into that yellow, that 11 million dollars, there will be times during the year where it is pushing whether or not there's enough cash flow for all the payrolls and all the expenses.
But like probably your super table, say you get your money in and that six months on the road, you're waiting for more money?
Correct.
But it's a million, I mean, does that sound like a couple of million? And then you get a payment that moves back like in 11?
Yes, I don't know if the numbers are precise, you know, a couple of million, I don't, especially right now. I don't think that that would be the situation. But yes, plus we're a school district, a lot of our expenses come at the beginning of the school year when a lot of the supplies are purchased. There's also other times, you know, depending if you have a bad winter, where, you know, you could have a much higher utility bill, things like that. So it really can fluctuate. We could give you more information later if you want about what the old nets are during the school year. It's actually all they get. But when we look at those projections across the year, it's really that 11 million dollar mark where we feel comfortable without having to put ourselves in a situation where additional cash could need to be borrowed. And again, short-term cash flow borrowing does not mean that you're closing the doors or you're going under, not even close. You still have a fund balance of 11 million dollars. But the fact of the matter is, you want to be taking some of your revenue each year and using it for interest instead of using it for operations.
So.
Margaret?
The 12 years I was on the board, we always had to do some short-term borrowing.
Right.
Very common, it's not like the world's coming to the end.
And that's what I tried to portray, it's not like the world's coming to the end. At the same time, depending on the interest rates, it can be thousands of dollars that are spent borrowing money instead of.
200,000 dollars.
I'm sorry?
Like 200,000 dollars.
200,000 dollars? Yeah, that sounds about right. Yeah, if you borrow, you know, 5 million or something like that.
That's what we were doing.
Yep, and we can do that, but this 200,000 dollars, I mean, that's two teachers. That's two teachers, you have to do less of each year because you don't have a suitable fund balance.
Well, one is a good indicator.
Yep. Thanks, Margaret. I appreciate that. Okay, so that was a power, I mean, that's 40 minutes, that was a power-packed 40 minutes. Eric and I could talk for 40 hours on our subject. But we did want to give you kind of a high-level view of the district finances, show you some trends, talk about some of the key factors. Both Eric and I are happy to meet with any board member, any community member or staff member that wants to talk more about this. But are there any other questions for the large groups? We have about two more minutes before we need to adjourn this and get ready for the next meeting. Margaret?
I'd like to make a comment on the Fund 46.
Okay.
With all the technology moved out over there, it seems to me that there should have been a revenue plan to fund it.
There was a revenue plan, Margaret. We, and we kept adjusting the revenue plan as needed. Also, Fund 46 was where we used, if we ever had years where there was more revenue than expenditures at the end of the year. Because like Fund 73, you can make a contribution to Fund 46 in July and have it booked back to the prior year and thus increase the state aid. And I know you and I have talked about state aid before. But when we had to reduce the budget with the referendum not passing, we had some choices to make. And we could have either cut programming or we could have stopped contributing to our capital improvement fund. And last year, we decided to stop contributing to the capital improvement fund. That's a decision that we made each year, even during the year, depending on how our finances end up shaking out. It's not to say that we can't make additional contributions to Fund 46. But this is the projection right now if the current policy continues.
You've done a very good job of Fund 46.
Thank you.
Let's start it by you.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I'll tell you, it's, when I look at Wisconsin school finance, to me, it's just a terrific tool. For schools like Menominee, now, if you were not a positively aided school, then I would say Fund 46 would be in the state. Because if you're a negatively aided school, because you have high property values, then the amount of money you spend, you're actually losing aid on that. So you probably just want to use a different fund that isn't in the trust. But for schools like ours, this is terrific, it's almost like Roth IRA, personal finance, the way I see it. And I should mention also, another thing that has impacted this is our pool. And Kevin Tomaszewski, our director of building grounds, has done a terrific job with our pool. Everyone knows that swimming pools are very, very expensive. And our pool is getting old. And Kevin and his team have done a great job with the filtration system. They've done a great job with all the different systems that are in that pool, trying to link them along. We've had some major mechanical issues that we have dealt with in the last 12 months that have been expensive. And the board has done a good job prioritizing the most important pieces. There are some other things in that pool that really should and could be done over the next, you know, five or 10 years. Some of those are planned for in the capital, most of them are planned for in the capital improvement plan. But I think the board's going to have to make the fall decisions in terms of prioritizing and really trying to identify what are the things our district can afford at this point. Well, thank you so much, Eric, thank you. Great job for your first budget hearing, there are so many different terms, so many different things to consider. And board members, thank you for your attention along with everyone else. Rachel, if you want to adjourn this, maybe you can get ready for the next one.
Make the motion to adjourn. Try to make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.